This time called meeting, um, regular scheduled meeting for Monday, February ninth, two thousand nine to order, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Here.
Councilmember Dorn?
Here.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Muller?
Here. Approval of the minutes for the previous meetings, uh, the regular meeting of January twenty-sixth, two thousand nine, special meeting of February second, two thousand nine, uh, motion to accept.
So.
Moved by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher, second by Councilmember Lewandowski. If there's no discussion, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Presentations, presentation number one.
Police Chief Donald Port will present the Port Huron Police Department's annual report.
Good evening Mayor Muller and members of council. Tonight I'm going to present the Port Huron Police Department, two thousand eight annual report. Our focus, again through this year, has been on the reduction of crime in our city. Although you'll see a four percent increase in class-one crimes, we've seen a decline in several other very important areas. During this past year, we've experienced several successful apprehensions. One of the more interesting or bizarre cases that began in late December of two thousand and seven and continued in two thousand eight was a homicide investigation involving a one-year-old. We were notified in late December by the Fort Wayne, Indiana Police Department that they had recovered the remains of an infant in a house in their city and they had believed that it was committed and the crime was committed in Port Huron in two thousand and five. Our investigators responded to Fort Wayne and worked closely with their police investigators and eventually arrested the parents, the infant's parents, for the crime of murder. In August, two thousand eight, John Gonzalez, the father, was convicted of murder and is serving a life sentence in prison. We've also experienced several changes this past year. The most significant change in late May, our communication center merged with St. Clair County Central Dispatch. Our center had been in operation for more than thirty years. As a matter of fact, I spent the early part of my career in the communication center. This was a significant change for our agency. The most significant impact was a sixty percent increase in calls for service, which I'll discuss later in the report. In the past, we've experienced dram- a dramatic increase in cases that remained open or unsolved. We continue to reap the benefits of a procedural change we made in two thousand and six where we were able to experience an eighty-one percent decline in open cases in two thousand and seven and another two percent decline in open cases in two thousand and eight. We feel this change has made us more responsive to the public. I'll start with the slides. First slide talks about the increase in calls for service and this, we believe, is related to the, uh, to the change to central dispatch. In the past, we had a police supervisor readily available for our dispatchers to ask questions and confirm whether or not a police officer really needs to be sent. Unfortunately, inherent in a central dispatch, there isn't a sworn police officer readily available to answer those questions, so they send a police officer when one is requested. When we, when we noticed this dramatic increase, we began working more closely with the central dispatch director to try and come up with a way of reducing the number of calls because each, each call represents a time factor for the police officers. And if you notice on the, the next slide, it kind of confirms what I just said in the first one, we, we actually had a decline in the number of police reports, which indicates that additional ninety-seven hundred runs that we went on didn't generate ninety-seven or even, even more police reports, whi- which is very good. Uh, the next slide represents a class-one crime index. Class-one crimes are murder, criminal sexual conduct felony only, robbery, assault, burglary, auto theft, larceny, and arson. We were quite surprised to only have a four percent increase considering the, the economic times that we're in. We did have an increase in burglary and larceny, which, in a way you can expect, wh- when people are, are short of money, they, they tend to resort to, to steal. The next slide, our homicides fortunately did not go up, they stayed at zero for the second year in a row. We have seen a decline in criminal sexual assaults. Robberies have gone down. If you notice the slide on robberies, two thousand and six, we seemed to have a bumper crop. That was the year that, uh, we had the bank robberies and that was the year that we had several street robberies and, and we, we really put our nose to the grindstone and made several good apprehensions, which put the word out that it's not the best place in the world to be a bank robber or any other type of robber and, and that continues to pay off for us. Charged assaults, that continues to decline. Damaged property crimes continues to decline another fourteen percent. Burglaries went up twenty-two percent over two thousand and seven, which, uh, we can anticipate with, with the change in the, the economic conditions, along with the next slide of larcenies with an increase of fifteen percent. Arson, we saw a decrease of forty percent and auto theft of fifty-two percent. The next slide isn't included in the class-one crimes, it's domestic violence or domestic assaults and we've seen a significant increase in domestic assaults. Uh, again, when, when the economy turns bad, people tend to, uh, fight within their own households and, and we get more calls for domestic violence. Juvenile and adult arrests are, are on the, the decline and now we'll switch to the traffic section. We've seen a, a one percent increase in, uh, traffic crashes, which may be just that people drove less miles last year because of the high gas prices. The next slide, uh, injuries and accidents is something that the Office of Highway Safety Planning looks closely at to determine if our enforcement action is being effective and it seems that we're on the downward trend, so we believe our enforcement action is, is in fact being effective. The fatal accidents was a fifty percent decline, but when you go from two to one, fifty percent sounds like a huge number and it's just one, but we're, we're appreciative that it was, that it did decline. Traffic violations dropped twenty-seven percent. We believe that, that this is in part due to the increase of ninety-seven hundred calls for service and another program that I'm going to talk about in a minute that tends to tie up the patrol officers so that they have less time to work traffic. But the good news is, the traffic enforcement that they have done has been proving to be effective with the reduction of injuries and, and the, the minor reduction in accidents. Next slide is parking enforcement. We, we've seen a, a very minor decline in, in our parking enforcement even with the changes that have taken place and I'm not sure where that'll go over the next year. We have had a decrease in OWI, but it was very similar to two thousand and six. The next page talks about open reports. As I mentioned in the opening, we made, Captain Jones pointed out to us in two thousand and six that, that we had a high number of unsolved or open cases and we felt that we weren't properly servicing the public, so we came up with a program and, and we, we looked at the cases and found that they were mainly misdemeanor cases that were piling up, that we just didn't have enough investigators. So we began to send them back to the road patrol for a follow-up investigation when they have time, which resulted in a huge decline in the number of open cases. And again, when people make a report, they, they want to know that it comes to some kind of conclusion and, and this gives us the ability to go back to the public and say, "Well, either we didn't find anything or there wasn't anything more we could do on your case," but at least they get another follow-up call. The next, the next page talks about more, uh, reports closed by warrants. As you can see, there's been a, a big increase in two thousand and eight. It seems that the plan is working. We're following up on these cases and we're now asking for more warrants to be issued. The next group talks about, uh, cases assigned to the detective division. You can see from two thousand and seven to two thousand and eight, we've been able to reduce the number of cases assigned to our detectives. You have to remember, these are all major cases. These aren't the simple misdemeanor. These are ones requiring a great deal of follow-up and a great deal of time. Now the investigators have much more time to work on the cases. And even though their, their number of warrant requests have gone down, if you look at it as a ratio compared to what they've been assigned, it naturally will begin to trail up. In the last slide, the last slide, actually the last two, I think it's the final page in the report, talks about capture tips. This we've never reported in the past, just because we've kind of lost it in our, in our whole reporting process, but we're very pleased with the, the progress of the capture program and the, and the results. Even though it shows that we, we only had twenty-three arrests on it, if you notice, there's one that says "out of pickup range" and there were thirty-five. We have certain ranges that we'll go to pick people up, so chances are, if they would have been closer, we would have arrested those people, so you could add thirty-five more onto that. But we had a total of two hundred and sixty-six capture tips that came in in the past year. And remember, that's a privately, that's strictly funded by donations, so there's no cost to the city to run that program. In conclusion, I want to thank the men and women of the Port Huron Police Department for the fine work they've done again this year. We're fortunate to have highly trained and motivated group of employees looking out for the welfare of our citizens and our city. I want to especially thank Captain Jim Jones, Supervisor Shelley Pavlamack, Officer Laura Phillips, for all the work that went into compiling the information and building this report. Now I'll entertain questions.
Any questions for Chief Port? Comment? Good job. Thank you. Excellent.
Is to hear comments concerning liquor licenses, delinquent and payment of taxes, utility payments, and our income tax reporting payments.
Motion? Or, I'm sorry, I don't have public hearing number one.
There's nothing for it.
Okay. Public hearing number one is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number one, now is the time to do so. All we do is request that you only speak to public hearing number one and that you identify yourself and spell your last name for the clerk. Anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number one, now is the time to do so. Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing number one is closed. Public hearing number two.
Is to hear comments on the proposed two thousand and nine annual action plan.
Public hearing number two is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number two, this is the time to do so. Request that you speak to public hearing number two only and that you give your name and spell your last name for the clerk. Anyone wishing to speak in public hearing number two, now is the time to do so. Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing number two is closed. Public audience, this is the time that you can address the city council on any issue that you think is important to the city council or to the workings of the city. All we do is request that you give your full name, spell your last name for the clerk and that you keep your comments to no longer than four minutes. Public audience is now open. Anyone wishing to speak in public audience, now is the time to do so.
Good evening Mayor. Good evening City Manager and council members. I'd just like to let everybody know that, uh, I very much appreciated the candid comments last Monday evening at the pre-budget session. I think for the first time in many years, uh, other, other than it stretched out a little bit, I think it was very productive and, uh, I wish more people were there to pay attention to it. The other thing I would like to speak about while we're talking about that, uh, pre-budget meeting was the fact that I, I think that we have to end the use of our endowment fund to subsidize a cemetery. I think the cemetery should be on a pay-as-you-go basis and it's one of the subjects you'll probably be talking about during the regular budget sessions. The other thing that I would like to talk about also is the fact that I think this is about the fourth or fifth year that I've urged the city to become proactive. Uh, we've already experienced one damming up and we've had some homes damaged with high waters and things because of Black River and the ice formation and it would, there's a possibility of another one that Captain Ike is trying to forego with some new measures. But I think we need to encourage the Department of Engineers, along with Fort Rash at Township and Port Huron Township, to dredge Black River. Black River, for as far as you go, probably quarter mile beyond the overpass bridge, it's darn near navigable, navigable on feet. If it hadn't been for some of the owners of, uh, who live on the canals up there marking those safe ways to get through there, you couldn't get through Black, Black River. And I think that leads to an abnormal amount of flooding and when the ice break up, it's got no place to go. Next thing I got is I just have a question and I, maybe you guys can discuss this later. Are there going to be any penalties for the contractor not finishing the Seventh Street Bridge on time? And, uh, the other thing that has to do with, with our public works thing, uh, former council member Neil brought up the fact right after Tenth Avenue was completed, how some of the aspects of Tenth Avenue were quite bad. I think anybody that's been up on Tenth Avenue recently has to start thinking of what, whether we're in a rural community or not. Tenth Avenue has deteriorated terribly and I think at the rate it's going, it won't survive another winter and I think it's only what, maybe four years old. And I think what, if we're going to start doing this kind of work, we've got to insist on quality and not quantity. Thank you very much.
My name is Joanne Rumford, R.U.M.F.R.D. and I live at thirty-five forty Parkway Drive, apartment nine. Um, good evening City Council, City Manager, um, Bruce Brown, welcome to the City of Port Huron, also to your position here as City Manager, Sue Child, I don't want to leave, I usually leave the clerk out, and the rest of City Council, and Mayor Muller. Time should not be considered like a commodity, uh, such as M.D.O.T. and Bridge Plaza Casino and Water Sewerage Separation Project, um, but they are, as something useful as our patients here in Port Huron has had to go through financially. But I, I have to say now, you guys are on the right track, okay? Um, you're, you're, you're trying to do this and, and you're doing it the right way. Um, and I'm talking about a new future sports facility. It's all, as everybody knows, it's, it's, it's cheaper to, to tear down and build new than to build up. And also I want to talk about my dad who passed away in nineteen ninety. He knew only too well how important the Great Lakes is to those living in Michigan and Canada. We lived, uh, in Detroit, is where I grew up, but we had a summer cottage at Ippewash Beach in Canada, on, on the beach. And the property taxes went from five hundred, when California passed their, uh, water, um, property taxes jumped sky high, so did, so did Canada's shoreline. I want to quote from a, a passage I, I read in a book. "The water was warm and delightful, but it had a strange texture, and then I noticed the oil refinery several miles away. I could just ma- make them out in the early morning light, not the most refreshing swim I've had, ever had." And that's quoting from Valerie Plainwellson's book, Fair Game, on page one sixteen. Copyright two oh seven and two oh eight and copyright two oh seven afterward by Laura Rosen. Now I hope, you know, I know Canada across the border was going to have an oil refinery over there, but they backed it out of that. Okay, now I want to, uh, clarify three clarifications from the last City Council meeting I was in public audience. The third one is, um, finally the letter I received from Department of Environmental Quality dated December fifth, two thousand and eight. Subject finding of no significant impact regarding Port Huron projects in parentheses, Twenty-first Street Phase One, Twenty-first Street Phase Two, uh, Phase One, Stone Street Phase Two, and then fiscal year two thousand and ten project in parentheses, Water Street. I did not respond to DEQ by phone or letter, however I did mention this letter in public audience after receiving the letter. Number two, my water bill of a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents, which included a light fee. A new water heater was put in my, um, apartment, uh, in October and hopefully that might make a difference to my water bill. Since then, I, um, I've had the city, uh, public works out and they said my meter's fine, uh, but it, but I don't know if the meter is, um, can, the sewerage cost is more than water, so I don't know if it's a water issue here. It might be a, uh, you know, I know Mayor Muller said in one City Council meeting that if we had the wind turbine binds, it would maybe help, you know, the cost of, uh, you know, you know, running the sewer separation, okay? Number one, and my notes ta- taken Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven, discussion, water sewer billing if we have time. That was at the roundtable discussions. Um, as I can summarize, in tonight's City Council meeting, we did not have the time, nor did the former City Manager Carl Thomian. And is there any questions regarding my water bill? Cause you guys, you know?
Your time, your time is expired, but anyone has any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in public audience? Now's the time to do so. Hearing none, seeing none, public audience is closed. Uh, Bob answered Ken's question, I believe we said no because there's a part missing and on the light fee for the job, but...
Mayor Muller and council members, I, I believe you're speaking of the Seventh Street Bridge?
Right.
Seventh Street Bridge project is bid through the Michigan Department of Transportation, not through our contract procedures. And they do have some provisions in there, however, we are going to have to comply with the, whatever provisions they, they have. I'd like to point out that this project is a hundred percent funded with grant funds, which requires us to use their bidding documents.
Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. Motion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens?
I'd like to have number two removed.
Number two, removed. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember McCullough. This time clerk will take the roll.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. With the passing of the consent agenda, resolution number four was passed confirming and declaring single lot special assessments in the total amount of five hundred seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents for special trash pickup in the right of way. Resolution number six, appointing Yvonne J. Williams as the Democratic Representative on the Board of Campusers to fill the non-expire term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. Resolution number seven, reappointing Donna Kelly and Darcy Mackey to the Beautification Commission for three-year terms to expire January thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. Ordinance one, third and final reading, an ordinance to grant SEMCO Energy Gas Company, a division of SEMCO Energy Incorporated, its successor, and assigns the right, power, and authority to lay, maintain, and operate gas mains, pipes, and services on, along, across, and under the highways, streets, alleys, bridges, waterways, and other public places and to do s- do a local gas business in the city of Port Huron, St. Clair County, Michigan, for a period of thirty years. Upcoming events, February thirteenth and fourteenth, Worth Productions presents Bewitched at the Fog Cutter. This is just for the merry men. February fourteenth is Valentine's Day. Uh, for, February thirteenth, fifteenth, eighteenth, Ice Hawks Hockey at McMorn. February fourteenth, everything classic antique radio show at Great Lakes Maritime Center at Vantage Point. February twenty-first is the mayor's birthday, uh, Maritime Art and Photo Show at Great Lakes Maritime Center at Vantage Point. It's also the mayor's birthday, you didn't have that on there Sue? Hey, okay. From the City Manager, number one.
Number one is a recommendation that the bid of T.R. Piperzak in the amount of nine million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents for the Twenty-first Street Phase One Sewer Separation, Water Main Replacement, and Street Paving Project be accepted.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Stevens, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Uh, Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
I believe we heard, but I don't know if the public has heard, that this is considerably under the original budgeted amount.
That is correct and, uh, that was reported to us by Mr. Clegg at the last council meeting, special meeting and, uh, um, that's, pardon me?
Three million.
Saved us three million dollars, so, um, appreciative. Times are hard, but in some cases, times are good, so that was an example.
Along tha- along that note, I'd also like to notice how many of the companies that bid on it were located in Port Huron, which would be zero. Again emphasizing we're not very business friendly.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Would like to say that, uh, was a local company from the county though that, uh, did get the bid.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resil- from the City Manager, number two.
Is transmitting the quarterly financial report for the six-month period ending December thirty-first, two thousand and eight.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Byrne. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember McCullough.
Uh, can we take this opportunity to have, uh, well, John's up here. Ed, you have to come up and give us a, uh, just a, a quick synopsis of, uh, the numbers he's given us.
The hearing council, before you, you have the second quarter report and, um, let's find, um, some notes on it.
Ed, let me interrupt for a minute. He was just saying, "I'm glad McCullough's not here," and then you show up.
I was actually going to stay home. I saw, I saw him say that before I reached down here.
Go ahead, Ed.
Uh, our expenditures are, uh, down approximately six hundred thousand dollars from, uh, the appro- the, uh, the same time last year, so that, uh, is good news. Uh, also, though our revenues are down approximately three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, so if things hold, uh, we should, uh, still finish the year okay, although, uh, since last week's report that Mr. Ogden gave you, we do have, uh, income tax numbers for the entire second quarter and the second quarter was down about eleven percent from last year. Year-to-date, we're down about six percent from last year, although the quarters tend to fluctuate, uh, quite a bit, so it, it's, it's still a little early to tell, but we want to be cautious about that. Uh, other than that, I, I don't think there's anything new, uh, since Mr. Ogden's report last week, so I think that's about the only new information we have.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Byrne? Yeah?
I'm, uh, I just had to ask that one.
Anyone else?
Mayor Muller, I have a comment.
Councilmember Stevens?
I would just like to, um, say that I really appreciate the fact, and I'm sure the rest of the council does, that the people that work for the city are watching the budget. When we have savings and we're looking at the numbers coming down, um, it's appreciated. These are tough times, so if we can end this year with our revenues down and our expenses down even more, it'll be nice. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number one.
Is authorizing payments one through sixteen.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Stevens, second.
Support.
Support by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number two.
Would appoint Casey Harris and reappointing Kurt Epley to the Downtown Development Authority for terms to expire February ninth, two thousand and thirteen.
Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Byrne, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Discussion, comments, questions, or concerns?
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Stevens.
I'd like to just, um, ask Bruce. Bruce, uh, were you presented with all of the applications of interested residents from the city?
Yes, we had a number of applicants. I assume that unless there's some huge problem, we would reappoint, uh, someone that served and is interested in continuing to serve, which we did with Mr. Epley, and, uh, and we had, had a discussion internally and felt that Casey would be a good selection for the other position.
I just wanted to be sure that you had seen all the applications. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne?
No.
Councilmember Dorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Resolution number three.
Number three, would approve the agreement with Tetra Tech MPS for professional engineering services during the construction of the Twenty-First Street Phase One Sewer Separation Water Main Replacement and Street Paving Project.
Motion.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember McCullough.
Move for the adoption of resolution number three.
Second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Lewandowski. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? This is, um, Grizzle Street, um, Baird Street, Bob? Or is it Grizzle Street to Court Street, um?
Mayor Muller, I, I do have a map if you would like to see it.
Yeah, could I see it again? I just want to refresh my memory.
Sure. It's from Griswold to the railroad, exclusive of Twenty-Fourth and exclusive of Sixteenth, but everything between.
Okay. When it, the second one is the park that's south of, or north of this, right?
Yes, sir.
What was the projected date for that?
Um, we're now having the projects, uh, because of the extension in time granted by, uh, the DEQ, uh, the projects are every other year, so, uh, our intent would be to let that project in two thousand and eleven, so that'd be two thousand and eleven.
Okay. I just drove down, I just drove down there the other day. Some of those roads aren't gonna make it for two years.
Uh, sir, I couldn't agree with you more, and, and it's, it, it's very hard for us to drive those roads or try to do repairs. We're trying to be patient until we can get there and, and do everything at once, it's so much more efficient.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Resolution number five.
Would approve the lease agreement with Metro PCS Michigan Incorporated to put a stealth cellular telephone antenna at the Riverside Boat Launch Site.
Motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lewandowski, second. Support. Supported by Councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Kim, did they end up agreeing to take the barbwire off the, okay.
Mayor Muller?
The answer was affirmative for you and the audience. Um, Councilmember Byrne?
I just wonder if we heard anything from the adjoining properties or neighborhood, any concerns?
No, we have not. I look at the heads out there shaking.
Yeah, I saw, I saw it shake.
This was, uh, voted on by the people and passed, uh, what, in the November election, I believe? Okay.
I just didn't want to see the one or two people outnumbered by the entire city on this.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Ordinance number two.
Is before you for its first and second reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter Twelve Businesses, Article Ten, Peddlers, Solicitors, or Transient Merchants of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron for the purpose of allowing vendors to sell food, merchandise, or services from a specific location on property owned by the city of Port Huron.
Mayor Muller.
Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher.
Move that ordinance number two be given its first and second reading?
Second.
Support.
Support by Councilmember McCullough. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion?
Uh, Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
I think this is definitely a step in the right direction to help us be more, uh, tourist-friendly and have more visible vendors out up there selling useful items, and it's a pretty good compromise from the different angles that we could've taken.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Byrne.
Yes.
Councilmember Dorn.
Yes.
Mayor Muller.
Yes. Ordinance number three.
Is an ordinance to amend Chapter Twelve Businesses, Article Eight Massage Establishments of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron for the purpose of exempting massages licensed by the state of Michigan from application of this article.
Motion.
Mayor Muller.
Councilmember McCullough.
Uh, move that ordinance number three be given its first and second reading?
Motion. Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Support.
Supported by Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher. Questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Councilmember Byrne?
Uh, as usual, I question why we even need this. Is there some sort of history that says we need to be regulating these things as opposed to getting out of over-regulating people? I realize there's some connotations there, but I don't know that we have a history of problems here, do we?
I, I don't know. Mr. Lewis, say?
Mayor, members of council, uh, it, it predated me, but I believe that there was a, uh, history of problems, uh, with, and, uh, I think the reason that the city adopted, uh, the massage ordinance in the first place, uh, was because there were massage establishments engaged in, uh, more business than just massage. Uh, and, uh, the, so the, we amended it a year ago to take some of the, or, two years ago, to take some of the onus off of places that are legitimate, uh, legitimate businesses. They were operating out of, sometimes out of doctors' offices, out of chiropractors' office, offices, but there was no state, at that time, there was no state, uh, licensing requirement for massage, for massage therapists. Just within the last six weeks, the state has adopted, uh, a state licensing, uh, statute requiring massage therapists to be licensed under, under state law, and what this does is, is take, uh, anyone who is licensed under state law, the, the, the whole article doesn't apply, and it's still aimed at, uh, basically regulating the illicit businesses.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the state now has a law, it applies to any massage therapist that is a licensed massage therapist, and so anyone who doesn't have the state license wouldn't be licensed to practice in Port Huron anyway, correct?
They would, uh, they would not be licensed under the, under the state law, yes, but we would still have the, uh, basically, uh, the ability to, uh, deal with those establishments because they are not, uh, they would come under the regulation of our ordinances. Basically, our ordinance is designed so that any of the business, any of the businesses we have now doesn't apply to.
I guess I'm still a little bit confused. So if somebody wanted to open up a massage part of their business here in the city of Port Huron, they wouldn't have to comply with the state law, but they could still open up a massage business?
No, not under, not under our ordinance.
Okay, so this is kind of duplicating the state law, then, if I'm hearing correct?
In some respect, yes, but, uh, it, uh, for those that are covered by the state law, uh, our ordinance doesn't apply to them.
Which if they're not covered by the state law, they can't have a massage business?
Well, under, under state law, it depends on what they, uh, and I can't tell you exactly what the specifics as to the, uh, requirements for, uh, licensing under the, under the state, uh, under the state law. Our ordinance was, uh, was designed originally, and still is designed, to deal with the problem that the police dealt with a number of years ago.
Okay.
And not just in this jurisdiction, but, uh, they've, they've been in many other, uh, cities and towns throughout the state, and, and they've been a problem.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, there's statutes against running a house of prostitution.
Correct.
So I guess I go back to what Mark's saying here. This is a duplication of the state statute.
In that respect, yes, but it makes it easier to deal with and to, uh, uh, sometimes get the evidence that, uh, that the police have to get if you're talking about, um, dealing with houses of prostitution.
So instead of charging prostitutes with prostitution, we charge them with not having a massage license?
Basically, you keep the business from, uh, from beginning in the first place. Through this kind of regu, regulation. I mean, certainly council, uh, it's within council's parameter.
I guess I don't understand, if, if this is to stop prostitution, why didn't we think of this a hundred years ago? Uh, we've got prostitution laws on the books that don't stop prostitution. Having a law that's a duplicate of the state isn't gonna stop prostitution either. May, I'm lost here, I guess, maybe, but that's the way, I'm, I'm agreeing with Mr. Byrne. I don't believe that this is necessary.
Uh, I mean, that, that, that's ultimately up to council. There was, uh, we didn't, uh, we, we brought this because the state had, uh, adopted the, the licensing, and we didn't want them to have to be licensed under city ordinances as it was prior to bringing this, uh, this amendment. Uh, they would've been required to have been licensed under both, uh, state law and, uh, and city ordinance.
Let me ask you, John, do we, do we charge to have them licensed in the city? Is there a licensing fee?
Yes.
There is if they actually have, we don't, we didn't license anybody last year because they all qualified as a massage therapist because they all had the training.
Correct.
That we were aware of. We would only go out and chuck on it if we didn't receive a complaint.
So who do we license them?
Nobody at the moment.
Well, i- if I wanted to get a license, who would? Go on, sir.
You know, one of the reasons I think we left it in place too last year was because of the fact that we wanted establishments to let us know that that's what they were opening up as, is, as an establishment, and as long as the establishment had only, um, trained or educated.
Right.
Massage therapists, then there was no reason for them to get a license. That was one reason why we made a change last year for, and that's why we had nobody last year to, to get licensed, because they were, they were all done through chiropractic's offices, massage establishments that were, that's all they were doing was massage therapy, um, doctors' offices, what have you.
So who are we licensing, I guess? If we're not licensing anybody, who is this preventing from doing this, then? If we're not licensing anybody, who is this preventing from getting a license?
Someone who does not have, basically, there are, there are specific massage therapy schools, uh, that train legitimate massage therapy. Someone who doesn't meet those kinds of qualifications, because that's what, I think, what is required under the state law.
And the state doesn't require that?
No, it, it does. It does, if they, they have to meet certain requirements to, to be licensed under the state law. I'm not sure that, uh, in the previous spas that, uh, they would've met those qualifications. I know the one we dealt with where I lived that wouldn't have.
I guess, uh, because it's just the first and second reading, I'll vote yes on it, but I, I, I would expect a, a better explanation by the next council meeting, or I'll be voting no. Uh, Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher?
I guess more of a scenario. Um, if this Chapter Twelve didn't exist at all in our code of ordinance.
With respect to massage?
The massage therapy.
Yeah.
If it was strict, stricken altogether, and I decided tomorrow to, out of my home, open up a massage therapy with no license, no training. What would happen? Without this ordinance, someone would have to file a complaint with the state licensing board?
Yes.
And the state licensing board would have to come in.
Yes.
And take care of that. That would not be a city police issue, then, correct?
Well, if, if it was a, uh, if it was a criminal offense, and off the top of my head, I, I believe that it is a criminal offense under state law, police can investigate any criminal, uh, criminal offense.
Okay, but...
Whether it's state law or local ordinance.
But with this ordinance on the books, it could be reported to the local police easier?
Well, it could be reported to them, they could, uh, or it could be reported to the clerk's office for that matter, and they would direct it to the, uh, to the police to, uh, to investigate, yes.
Hey, going along with what Mayor Pearl Tim Fisher's saying, that with this, being a city ordinance and we get the fine money, right? That's the bottom line. If we cite somebody, then we get it, whereas if we cite them under state law, we don't?
Correct.
All right, now I understand. It's the money, okay.
Mayor Muller?
Councilmember Byrne?
We've had a lot of, a lot of these.
Speaking of the money part, uh, if we were to obsolete this particular section, is that cheaper than revising it as far as paying for the reprinting and everything?
Uh, let's address that.
The more you take out, the more it costs you, the more you put in, the more it costs you.
Change costs.
So if you take out a whole ordinance, it's gonna cost you because all those pages have to be changed, believe it or not, because there are pages that follow this, so they've gotta, it'll, it'll, depending on how it falls within the codebook and how it's laid out, it is, it is going to cost one way or the other, and we have to do something one way or the other, correct?
I think we should.
One way or the other.
I, it gets back to, uh, when we were talking about the drinking and the burning ordinance, or the drinking ordinance. It was still illegal whether we did away with it or not, and the only difference was that the city didn't get the money, so.
Correct.
For that purpose, we leave it here, so I'll, I will support it for that purpose. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one.
Go ahead, Councilmember Byrne.
So in the case of massaging without a license to massage, we would get the money?
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Which is not what the intent of the ordinance was, hearing the history on it.
Intent was to stop massage.
I missed the question. What was the question?
Uh, massaging without a license to massage is where we'd get the money. Uh, still, doing the original intent of the ordinance, which was to stop prostitution, has nothing to do with this and has nothing to do where the money would go.
No, not the original intent, you're right. The original intent was to do, to help enforce prostitution.
Okay, so...
The intent now is, uh, the state's passed it, basically, so that we collect the, uh, fines if the police are to enforce it or the clerk's office were to enforce the ordinance violation, instead of the state getting the, fines at the court, we would give the fines.
For massaging without a massage license.
Yes.